Driving back today. We're really getting elected early. But talking about Northern Canada. My cousin, my wife's cousin is important on translation for the Bible for this Indian tribe that's in the
Hey Tom, how are you?
Canada. It's really interesting.
We're scrambling to get one MRF application right then. We will reach the deadline.
I'm gonna go.
We may have a chance at the money after the other eighty-four towns.
Pretty darn good. Life's too short not to be good.
Oh, I know. The weather's been too nice.
For municipal buildings, only for insulation everywhere, new heat pumps, about three hundred thousand.
Do you know they're giving out partial grants?
They are giving out partial grants, and I think that's what
I was here for Labor Day.
At first, they kicked everybody out of eighty-four towns.
And they're getting pretty big black eyes.
Yeah.
I don't have a sense of the weather. So here we are, twenty-three years. So whatever you think, whatever you think, whenever it's a real good day, I think.
There was a hundred and ten.
Yeah, I live in the falls. Nine years. Forty-eight, forty-nine years.
Wow, I have to give all these things to you.
Good count.
Like Tom, my burden is family. Yes, you must.
Was it well-intended to lie to people?
Yes, yes.
Speaking of
Time just went by.
Who was that store owner? You buy from the store.
Hey Mary.
Hey there. Oh, I got a few things. Oh, I feel a little bit carried. I don't know.
Carried.
Were you in a rush? Yeah. That's kind of all over the place feeling.
Yeah.
Not a little rowing.
Look, I have these shoes that I don't remember not fitting very well. A year, you know, last year, but now this year, they're like. Hi, oh, Tom. Did you get that stuff?
Everything, everything's like.
I'm about to make that.
Mary, yeah. I want my candles. It's very, very pleasant. My feet are cold. That surface.
Oh, yeah.
So we can, yeah, we can talk about that. Yeah. We pretty much just see the wood stove.
I get my physical condition.
Usually, right now, it's worse more than the spring.
If it's a good day, sunny day, I get to convert.
No fire, so. Yeah.
I've had it for eighteen years.
Just put a jacket on.
Exactly.
This was stuck.
But then in winter, it's like. Yeah, exactly. You don't need a lot if you have a pretty clean area.
She's named she's the best. We've, I had this concrete for thirteen years.
It got.
I drive it.
Which case?
We did all the research.
Approved without
I don't know. Can I get the water? Why can't I get probably a little suitcase? Oh, yeah. Two days, four days, two weeks.
So I see her reply. I don't, I didn't catch it on my reading group.
Growing up, it's beautiful.
I never tried to go down.
So you're gonna ride bikes or something?
I might be for some, and I bought it on
I'm gonna go.
About ten years. In a barn.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
You put a couple on the floor.
People are gone.
Not sure what that means, like, uh. Yeah, that's it. Yeah. Yeah, okay. How do that?
And I've been there for ten years, so.
Yeah. Did you have a library board meeting anywhere that you thought you'd be?
Every year, every year, it was like Walkability group.
Oh, my goodness. Back to back to back.
Being seven o'clock, I call this regular meeting to order of the Northfield Select Board. Looks like, remember, Boris is gonna be coming late. He has a farmers market today. Would everyone join us in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Is there any need to adjust the agenda?
No need to adjust the agenda.
Next item is public participation scheduled. Alex Robb, the Executive Director of Community Capital of Vermont is here to speak to us. And I want to ask our Economic Development Director, Tom Davis, to give a brief introduction of Alex. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. Well, here we are again with the revolving loan that continues to revolve. The town has worked really hard for a number of years to try and put together a community loan fund that would both take care of local businesses and help them in need sometimes when they can't get bank financing. There's been a lot of steps along the way. As we, since I took this job in two thousand twenty-two, it's been an ongoing process of us trying to establish this loan fund and how best to fund it and get the most capital. But more importantly, how to administer to it, how to make approvals, how to take care of the administration side of the processing and paperwork. Working with the Economic Development Subcommittee mostly, but also keeping the select board informed. After a lot of research and a lot of things that we looked at over the last year, I also spoke to at least seven different communities about their community loan funds. And the ones who administered and processed loans in-house, so to speak, at their communities all had somebody who was on their staff at the town who happened to come from the banking industry and had loan-making and processing experience. That led me to a number of calls to find out, considering we don't have that asset unfortunately in our organization, to reach out and find out what other opportunities we have to work with somebody. And I was ultimately led to Alex here, who is from Community Capital of Vermont, who has been doing this for at least fifteen years now.
I've been doing this five, this one job for five years. We've been around for twenty-five years. Twenty-five years the organization has been there. And after I spoke with him, I introduced him to the Subcommittee and then at least a memo to the Select Board. And we invited him to come and present more about how they go through the process. And I'm excited to see if we can find the kind of terms that work both for his organization and so without any further ado, Alex, go ahead. Hi, thanks for being here, everybody. Yeah, so my name is Alex Robb. I run Community Capital of Vermont. I'm the Executive Director. We're located in the Barry Montoya Road, near Tractor Supply, near the Roundabout. We came out of Capstone Community Action, the Community Action Agencies. All the Community Action Agencies have micro-business development programs where they work with low-income people to start businesses. These are, you know, small businesses, like in small, you know, small businesses that people would start to have supplemental income. You know, example would be a property maintenance business for your mowing lawns. Throughout that work at Capstone, a group of Capstone employees got a grant from Patrick Leahy to start a loan fund within-house so that not only could they help these people start businesses, but they can also help them fund their businesses. We grew out of that and about fifteen years ago, we split up from Capstone Community Action, became our own entity called Community Capital of Vermont. We have three federal designations that we earned over the years, where what's known as a community development financial institution. That's a designation conveyed by the U.S. Department of Treasury. And you apply for it and you're recertified every year. And the primary test that you have to meet is you have to do sixty percent of your loans to low-income businesses. And it was a little easier finding low-income businesses during COVID in the last few years. A lot of businesses became low-income, but that has changed and it's, we've kind of backed it to our regular amount. What we do is we build up a book of low-income loans and then we do some non-low-income loans to kind of fill in the rest of our loans. So we are, what's known as community development finance institution. And we have to provide both lending and also education in order to get that designation. And the main ways we provide education is we provide QuickBooks training. We provide attorney services, which are the two things that most small businesses need. We also do things like marketing consultants, social media stuff, stuff like that. So our second designation is we're SBA micro lender. And that's the, a program of the Small Business Administration. And it's their smallest loans, and it's loans up to fifty thousand dollars. And the way that program works is that we borrow money from the SBA for about two, two-and-a-half percent, and we lend it out to about eight percent. And, you know, eight percent for a lot of entrepreneurs who are paying thirty-two percent on a credit card is a really reasonable rate. For instance, for most of the folks that come to us with credit card debt that they've accumulated through building their business, we can take the monthly interest payment that they're making, just interest on their debt to service that debt. And we can turn it into the same amount of money while also paying off the principal. So we can amortize that because we have our eight percent rates. The SBA designation comes with federal grants to help support our educational services as well. We can borrow up to seven million dollars from the SBA. We have about one and a half million dollars that we have borrowed so far. The third part is where what's known as a USDA. Basically, it's the exact same program as the SBA, but it's run by the USDA and it's run almost exactly the same. They provide loan capital to us, we lend it out, and we get a reimbursement grant for the technical assistance that we provide to businesses. So those are our three designation. So we, what that means is we have a really good sources of loan capital and we have those sources at about two to three percent. And what we need in order to deploy that loan capital is we need low loss reserves. So the SBA and the USDA, they like to have their, we borrow, borrow that money from them, so they want, we have to pay it back. So we spent a lot of time, over the years, we've built out a lot of loan loss reserves through our activities. But a lot of municipal loan funds is they take the money from the municipality and use it as the loan capital. So if you have two hundred thousand dollars at your town and you want to start a loan fund, you take that two hundred thousand dollars and you loan out two hundred thousand dollars to businesses. And what we say, what our model is that you would take a hundred thousand of that two hundred thousand dollars and use it as a loan loss reserve. And we would go out and borrow, you know, say a million dollars and we would loan it out to the community communities. And the key aspect of that is it allows you to leverage your money and to use it to, like, the odds are that over the, you know, years, that that million dollars, we will access, you know, some of those loan loss reserves. Because the main customer, the main person we're going after is always the business owner, is someone who is risky. And what we've found over the years is that funding businesses really, in many ways, it's a numbers game. The more, you know, for instance, for startups in the town of Northfield that fill empty storefronts, the more businesses and the more people that try to start a business in those towns, not all of them will be successful. It's almost impossible to pick the winners and the losers because businesses, the life cycle of a business can be many years. You know, you just think about what's happened in the last five years in the business world with COVID and everything. So we really believe that you have to do, it's a numbers game, that you do a certain number of businesses and you fund them and you give them the shot to give their, do their best. And some of them will work out and some of them will not. But by having that constant ability to get these businesses, fund them and have them open a new storefront or whatever, and having that turnover will create, out of that will come viable businesses over the long term. So that's kind of our approach. And what we really focus on is we don't have zero percent loans. There is nowhere to get a zero percent loan anymore. We have, what we do is we offer really reasonable rates, the lowest rate we can get, which is usually the prime rate, which right now is about seven point five percent. So we're offering the prime rate to low-income loan businesses and we're also funding startups. Most banks will not loan anyone money unless they've had a couple of years of tax returns. And the problem, unless you have a home or someone who's willing to co-sign your house, one of the issues that's going on with young people not being able to purchase homes is that we're seeing that fewer of our applicants, of young potential business owners, have that collateral in order to take out those loans to start their businesses. So by, the town of Northfield helping us lend by supporting our loan loss reserves, it allows us to make more risky loans, and those include startup loans, the people with low collateral. They include loans to people with low credit, whichever defined is under six hundred and twenty, which is by far the number one correlated, the number one, like, statistic that is correlated with trouble having people pay back. And credit scores are not perfect, but they do correlate over time. If we look at our portfolio over twenty-five years, it's the credit scores under six hundred that have struggled the most. So what, having those loan loss reserves allows us to go out and borrow the money. It allows it to take these federal funds and put them into your community to support and to grow business. And then it also allows us to educate those entrepreneurs using the federal grants. And we also like, for each business, we can spend about, about five percent of the loan now on contracts over the years. So if someone were to take out a fifty thousand dollar loan, we would have about twenty-five hundred dollars in SBA grant money that we can expend over the next five years. And that would be to purchase a lawyer, attorney services for that person. It would also be to purchase, you know, if they need a sign for their business. So that's the basic value proposition of what we do. So just a couple of businesses that we've worked with, these are some names. I went through our, our list. And these are businesses we've worked with over the years and some of them, some of them, so they had Craft Beer Armory, some of them, Dr. Simon, dentist. He was a client of ours. He was the most recent client we've had in Northfield until he passed away. Green Mountain Kitty Liver, which I'm not sure what that is. The Northfield News, S.M. Aronson, which is an artist that paints fish. Stony Brook Fudge and Bakery, The Creative Gene on Thirty-One North Street, The Woods at Wyahah Cowie.
Weah Cowie.
Weah Cowie.
That wasn't bad, though.
Nine Hundred Bull Run Road, Middlesex Mills, and Riverton Memorials. So these are some of the businesses we've worked with over the years. And
For the record, Dr. Simone is alive and well. He just moved out of state.
Moved out of state, okay.
He did have a health emergency.
He had a health issue.
But he is, as far as I know, he's alive and well.
Yeah, that was one of the first loans that I worked on when I started five years ago and worked with his wife when they had to do that transition in the business. And I think he, that family would provide an excellent reference for how he handled the situation at that point. So we really feel that there's five ways that a lender can really help. One, we make loans at fair prices. We take your thirty-five percent credit card and we turn it into an eight percent loan. That you can, instead of just looking at the balance every month and only being able to pay the principal, you can actually, only by being able to pay the interest, you can actually tack that principal and start to pay it down. We make loans to startups, which is something that most, most banks will not do. We make loans to underserved populations. There's no question that people from various populations have had a harder time getting loans and bank loans than others. And those include low-income people and those include women. And we prioritize those applications. And basically what prioritization means is they work directly with me and we do everything we can with hands-on to work with them. We don't have any special programs for any specific groups of people. What we do do is try to push them through quickly. We refinance the predatory and credit card debt and we provide those counseling and education services. We have really, in, in, right now in our loan book, seventy-eight percent of our loans are to low-income entrepreneurs and sixty-two percent are to women-owned businesses. We're a nonprofit. We have a board of directors. And we're audited every year as part by KBS in St. Albans. And, yeah, we, you know, what we bring to the table in Northfield is we bring capital and we would bring, you know, we would have boots on the ground. We would have people come to town and walk around and introduce ourselves through the initial phase. We could provide quarterly reports to the town about our activities. And, you know, we also would provide legal services to help draft any MOUs or documents that might be needed to set this up. So that's our basic value proposition at Community Capital of Vermont. And, you know, I look forward to chatting with you all some more. I'm just trying to think if there's anything else. I think I pretty much covered everything. And I think the main thing is we have a very kind of simple, we try to do something simple well, repeatedly, over and over again. So we're not trying to, you know, you know, we're not trying to do anything fancy. We have a very basic loan product with no prepayment penalty, no gotchas, no where where the borrower feels like, oh, man, I really got, I didn't get that one, or, you know, I didn't understand. And, you know, a couple of questions to think about as you might consider doing something, you know. So, you know, you, we could design the program around some parameters that the town of Northfield might, might think would be best. So a couple of big picture things to think about is, would you, you know, obviously, you're going to provide loans to Northfield businesses, but will you provide them to only brick and mortar businesses or to home-based businesses in the middle of the town? So that's something to think about as well. Will you provide loans to Northfield residents with businesses in other towns? Will you include franchises? Those are a few big picture questions that we could, we could talk more about in the next step. But we have done a lot of revolving loan funds for towns. Currently, we work for the town of Jay, the town of Albany, Colchester. We have a central Vermont revolving loan fund. It's all kind of the Washington Central Supervisory Towns. And over the years, they've done really well. The town of Albany, which we have not been able to make a loan in yet, it's very, very hard, you know, to find a business in the town of Albany, Vermont. But, so, you know, we have done this over the years. And the main things that's hard for towns with revolving loan funds, and I'll kind of end on this, is that it's really hard for a town to, when you get twenty applications, to choose which application that you're gonna fund. And what we've noticed over the years is, and we, you know, we have all the systems and infrastructure to service those loans. We report to people's credit, so we have the infrastructure to report their positive payment history to their credit and help them improve their credit. But the real thing that's hard, I think, a lot for municipalities is if the loan goes bad, it's really hard for the town to collect on their home businesses. So we're a third party. And then what happens is most revolving loan funds run by towns, the collection process is simply a couple of letters and it's kind of over. And once the word gets out that that's the collection process, it can be really hard sometimes to keep the bad debts from illuminating. So having that third party where it's not the town going to the businesses, not, not collecting, you know, not paying their loan. You have, he's saying that. And, and then all I know on that is we offer a huge amount of flexibility to our clients. We only have a default rate of about three percent a year. And we do multiple steps to help them work. We offer them interest-only periods. We offer them workouts. We offer them balloon loans to lower their payments. And we give them months and months and months to try working on it.
May I ask one thing before the board closes? Because this is something that struck me, Alex, that I'd like you to speak to very quickly. When you and I had our first conversation, one thing that I think would be very important, everybody on this board, is, you know, working with small businesses, you don't just sit behind a desk and read numbers. You actually make business to the business and you spend time to get to know the entrepreneurs who are running it. You want to talk to that?
Yeah, so we do a site visit on every, our loan process is basically, someone reaches out to us. We're, we're pretty well-known in central Vermont. We see a lot of flow on different businesses. For instance, we've had to, an application and a very serious inquiry on the China Star Restaurant in the last two months. So we're seeing that kind of flow of basic interest in businesses. And our process is we start with a phone call. We collect, we do an old-school underwriting process. We collect their taxes, their bank statements. We ask for their financial documents, their profit, loss, their balance sheets. Then we meet with them a couple of times. We work with them to develop cash flow projections. So we're looking at sitting down with a business, going through, using templates that we've gotten from the Vermont Small Business Development Center, who's another partner of ours. And we project out their earnings for the next two years and we assess their ability to make the loan payment. And then we do at least one site visit and we do it in-person closing. And then we continue to check in every three months as the process goes. So we definitely don't do, we're not an internet bank. And we do a very hands-on process and we are super available. One thing we always try to do is map, entrepreneurs come to us, I get two or three calls today. They have amazing energy. And we try our best every day to meet that entrepreneurial, that energy that those people have when they're starting a new business with our own similar energy. Because it is, the thing that I really love about this job is I, it's just fascinating to see all the different businesses and all the different things that people decide to do and why they do them and what brought them to that point. And what, to do that business here in Northfield, Vermont, what led them to that is just fascinating. So, yeah, I really enjoy the work. I started out, I did fifteen years on Wall Street. I worked for six years in the business office at Washington Central Supervisor Union through two districts. And then I found this career, which has been like a great combination of my interest in businesses and finance, but also like wanting to do something more with the community, which I have been working with for a few years. Can I answer any questions?
Questions, floor board, rumors. Well, you mentioned that your interest rate, do you have any fees associated with this?
It was one percent origination fee.
And I see that this is not on the agenda, so that we can't take action on this tonight.
And I see that this is not on the agenda, so that we can't take action on this tonight, correct? Once more, we'll kick it down the county road. Is North, what is the North, what would be Northfield's input of, if we had someone, would they go through the town to access you?
I think that they could go through the town, the town referred them on to us. But we, we do all of our underwriting in five days. So that's one of the things we really try to do, is that once we have all the documents and what's called the complete application, we get it done in five days. And our general policy is that we have loan committees. So we have two loan committees a month that approve all loans over twenty-five thousand dollars, but all loans under twenty-five thousand dollars are done in-house. So, you know, if someone like I had, we have a loan committee next Wednesday. The cutoff for that loan committee was last Friday. So there's a cutoff, we're either ready or not, and we bring you to committee, or we don't. So the most anywhere we would have to wait would be about two hours. So we try to be patient because I, you know, a lot of, we also work with a lot of businesses that are on our strug, come upon hard times, you know? So, you know, we get a lot of calls, we're the last people they call. And sometimes it works out, it doesn't work out, but a lot of times we're actually able to help.
There you go, sir.
But the really, one of the big issues right now is just easy, simple debt refinancing for people who have bootstrapped their businesses on credit cards. And they bootstrapped them, you know, over the years, and now they're paid thirty-five percent, you know? And then, we also, so I, one thing I did mention is we also offer lines of credit. So we offer small lines of credit for businesses as well, where they can, you know, take out ten thousand dollars and then just pay interest on that, and then pay that back later on in the year. And that's really useful, especially for businesses that have seasonal cash flow fluctuations, like retailers that have to buy inventory. One of our lines of credit is like Bailey Road in Montpelier, which is a store. Sarah DePulis, I think grew up in Northfield. She, she has a forty thousand dollar line of credit with us, and she uses it to buy her inventory of seasonal every year, and then she uses it to sell. We have a bunch of sugar makers that have lines of credit where they take money out during the winter to, you know, finish out their sugaring operations, get everything set, and they pay us back in May. So, you know, that, it's very common with small home-based firms, like, you know, a bookkeeper who works at home, who is worried that they might get sick and not be able to work for a month, so they want to have a line of credit. We had a lot of lines of credit that we ended up making after the floods in Montpelier. And for businesses that were worried, they, you know, the nice thing about a line of credit is you go through the process and you set it up ahead of time, and then it's there for you when you need it. So if you're a hairdresser and you can sit down with us and spend a few hours and submit your documents, and get everything lined, and we approve it, and then you get hurt, or you sprain your ankle, you sprain your wrist, about four months later, and you're out of work for a few months, you just call us up and you say, I need a jet for five thousand dollars. So, you know, that's another thing that we would do, is we would go around to the businesses in Northfield and say, hey, there's this option for you. If you want to go through this application process, you can pre-qualify for you this. And then if anything happens to your business, you have this safety net available to you. Yeah, I think the next step with us would be to kind of talk again to the economic, you know, of, of, again. But, you know, we, we are very entrepreneurial, so we can move right away on this. And we do have an in-house counsel that we work with.
So, so the next step would be that this, we can't make a decision tonight?
Charlie, one thing about that. We had discussed already that ARPA funds might be the source.
That's what I thought.
Of funding this, and ARPA is on the agenda this evening, so it could be discussed.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Because we had to, we also have twenty thousand dollars in the Economic Development Fund that we had for loans, is the reason you're here, is because that disbanded a year ago, August. So we're trying to resurrect that and bring it up, and ARPA funds is certainly, well, that's an interesting approach, is to use that for our.
I believe that was what we thought we would do with that money, was.
Yes.
It's been on this list of, of ARPA projects.
Yeah, potential projects, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so if we make a decision to go with you tonight, then what's the next step?
The next step would be to draft a MOU. That we all agree on, yeah.
And how long does that take?
I, I, I have, I have many MOUs in my files, so I would probably take one, I'd run it through our lawyer, get our lawyer. Our lawyer's Elizabeth Glan, and, but she is on the board of a couple of banks, so she's pretty familiar with this area. So we have many MOUs in our files, but many agreements with towns, so I would adopt something.
And in that MOU would be the process for the manager to disperse the monies that we obligate or allocate to you, right?
It could, it could either, the actual funds could either be dispersed directly to us, or they could be held in a separate account, you know, much like you would have a loan at a bank, and they would have a CD that backs that loan. And that money could, could sit there, you know, until we had a bad loan, and then we were to access it. So it would not necessarily have to be dispersed directly to the Capital Vermont. It could sit in your, either in a specific CD or in your home account, you know, depending on what you prefer, but.
And home accounts, that we could keep the money and then have an obligation that when it's to be, it needed, it gets sent.
So what would happen is we make some loans, and then, you know, so, and it will happen at some point, one of the loans will go bad, and we'll say, we have to charge this loan off, and we would take the money out of that account, and we would use it to pay off the loan that we had taken out on the loan. And then, you know, we, we're envisioning structuring it something along the effect of, you know, the first loss portion would be the town in Northfield. So say we did, we took fifty thousand dollars and did a five hundred thousand dollar loan fund. You know, the, the first loss would be the town in Northfield, but Community Capital Vermont would be responsible for any additional losses on that fund. You know, if you figure you did five hundred thousand dollars in loans, and you're losing, you know, about three percent of those a year ago bad, and your average loan is in ten years, so you will lose, you know? But then those loans are declining, so it will, over time, the money will get used up. But it could take a long time, you know?
Is there a minimum amount?
Yes.
That the town should be looking at?
I think, you know, I think doing a two hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred, twenty-five to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be a great place to start. You know, at our average loan size, twenty-five thousand dollars would give you ten loans.
We haven't got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, I'm saying you would put in, you would put in only ten, one, ten percent of that. So you would take twenty-five thousand dollars. And then we would, we would, the twenty-five thousand dollars would sit in the account and sit there until a loan went bad. We would go out, we would borrow two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, okay.
And so we would, from a bank or from the SBA, but we have to pay that back. So we can't borrow that without that money as a bank one, you know? The SBA requires us to have loan loss reserves. So that money would sit there until one of our loans went bad, you know? And, you know, would, and who knows when that would be, but if we operated this revolving loan fund over years and years, it would happen eventually.
You said that we'd have to replenish it eventually. Do you have any examples from other towns? Just, I'm asking because right now we have ARPA funds, which means that we're in a situation that we're not usually in.
Right.
So if we put a healthy amount aside, it'd be easier for us to maintain it potentially than like having to come up with a chunk of money again in the future. Although we could budget and plan for small amounts to keep it healthy over time, but.
Yeah, I think we would better just do a single fund, like a Northfield Loan Fund One. Fund it, capitalize it, make a bunch of loans, see how it went with those first round of loans.
Yeah.
And, you know, as the money's coming into us, we're paying back. So it's not like the money, it's not like a revolving loan fund where the money's gonna sit in this account.
Yeah.
Like the, the, you know, a lot of revolving loan funds, like I said, you're, the, the money's being used as the actual loan capital. So you're taking twenty-five thousand dollars and you're making twenty-five thousand dollars in loans. And when that loan goes bad, there's no twenty-five, the twenty-five, the whole twenty-five thousand dollars is gone. Whereas this, what you're doing is you're taking twenty-five thousand dollars and you're putting it aside, and you're borrowing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, making two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in loans. And when ten percent of those loans go bad, which they will eventually, you take that twenty-five thousand dollars. But it doesn't change the fact that that, all those other loans are still outstanding. You know, so it would be, you know, if we probably have a, you know, a year or so, a year and a half, the people would apply for those, the loans, and then they'd be distributed. And then if they're successful, you do a Northfield Loan Fund too. You know, ideally, yeah. And then, so the other part I haven't talked about is I would also like reach out to local bank partners, like our one next door, and see if they're interested. We have long relationships with like the Bank of Burlington, Northfield Savings Bank. They may be potentially interested in being the source of the loan capital. And they'd be interested in offering, you know, instead of going to the SBA, they may be interested in partnering, and, you know, so we'd work for them as well. And, you know, what their interest would be is that they would, you know, hopefully maybe provide us a lower rate, but we would have an agreement with them that when the clients here became bank-worthy, we would send them over there to Northfield, and they would outgrow the Northfield Community Loan Fund, and they would go to Northfield Savings Bank, and then they would get a, get a loan there. And they were, what's called bankable, so.
If for some reason we had to dissolve the relationship with you all, that sounds like it's probably pretty easy, but.
I think it would be pretty easy, yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, I'm not quite sure how that would work, but.
Wouldn't that be spelled out, you know?
We'd have to spell it out, I'd have to think a little bit about that. The way they work now is that we end up giving you a bunch of loans.
Yeah.
So, which isn't, which isn't ideal, you know? So, because there's, because there's no, because there's no capital.
Yeah.
You know, like, but I would, I, again, I have several MOUs with examples.
Yeah, well, like you said before, the best way to do this is like to try it over a certain time period and then repeat. So like, probably that would be the most likely thing, is just not to keep going at some point, I thought.
I think, yeah, I think, I mean.
If that worked, I, I would like to ask about the end of things.
No, I think that's a really good, definitely a good point. You know, like, I said, we were, again, I have met, I have a bunch of different MOUs, and they, they, some of them end in different ways. But most of them, because the money was used as loan capital, and it was turned into loans, that when the fund goes, like, for instance, we took over the Town of Colchester's loan fund years ago, and, but it wasn't cash. It was, here's a loan from Junior's Pizza, that this is what we get, you know, you're not, that's what they gave us. They didn't give us money to make loans, they gave us the loans that they had already made. And then we took over their fund, which was the loans, the lame loans that Junior's Pizza has. That's how I remember that one.
Yep, let's, let's get through this floor board. Barry?
Yeah, I had, I wanted to say the same thing you already said about the ARPA stuff. So I also wanted to say that you grew, you grew out of Capstone?
We, um.
Spun off.
Well, spun off, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we used it.
I, I have good, good, I had good relationships with Capstone when I was working. And, um.
So it's Mary Beagling.
It's, it's an old War on Poverty program.
Yeah.
And people need to know that, that it is your government working for you. And I've always felt, had a good feeling about it, and I still think that they do some good things. And, and they do some good things with the program that Rosie Gray does.
Yep, that's the micro-business development.
Yes, yes.
Rosie sends us a lot, she sends us.
And she sends you a lot of stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the next question that I.
Not a lot, but when she has a business that, you know, like, that's come to her and done her classes, and they're ready for a loan, she refers them to us. So we.
Right.
We're a referral for a lot, we're also the Vermont Small Business Development Center, which is the statewide network of business consultants. They refer to us. VITA refers to us when their loans, their loans they refer to us because they're too small for VITA, so. Which is Vermont Economic Development Authority. Banks refer to us a lot when they have people that come in and they can't lend money to them. Instead of sending it way up to hand, and they give them my business card, and I get to talk to them about whatever situation it is. So that's kind of our role in Vermont, as, you know, we, we get a lot of the people who have been said no to.
Yeah.
And a lot of them are, some of them were said no to because their businesses are really struggling, and some of them were said, you know? And then the other main reason is startups. And I would say that having a facility in your town, when someone comes in and wants to start a business, where you can say, here, here's this guy's card, go talk to him, you know, his, he had, we have a special fund for this, is very powerful because, you know, like, for instance, in Montpelier and the floods, you know, there are all these businesses that were very badly affected. But now there's all these businesses that are now starting to come in. So you have that, you know, natural, you know, what happened naturally in capitalism, so.
Is there any investments in the stock market with your group?
We keep it all in government securities, so.
Well, so, John?
I have only the questions.
Lydia?
I'm good.
Yeah, you answered my question, what your recommended minimum amount was. Sounds like we're in the ballpark. Sounds interesting.
I think a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund, and you, we could do a little marketing campaign and announce it. I'd be happy to come up and have meetings with businesses up here and talk about what we offer. You know, and I think, you know, we could even do a competition. Pitch competition or something, so, yes, thank you.
Yes, Tom?
One other point that I spoke with Alex about, I, I found Alex through the Vermont Community Loan Foundation, which is an organization that does broader loans, sometimes larger, you can speak in specifics. And he's the one who, who referred me to Alex, but I think it's important to point out that businesses that really do well and are successful in our community, as their loan needs grow, there, Alex has the network to bring them to other funding. So the trail isn't stopped when they do a loan with them, but you, you work and do partnerships if you want to speak to that with a number of. I think of the coffee shop in Hartburg is the one that I saw.
Yeah, Front Sea Coffee, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, we have really good relationships with all the banks and with the Vermont Economic Development Authority, you know? So we help bring them along, and then we eventually become obsolete, is our goal, as they become bankable. So we've done a lot, over the years, we've done some really large, like Mama Va is one that we've done, that was a huge success. And we've done, we've had some failures, but we've had a lot of big successes, so. You know, it's, yeah, and we really, we are a statewide organization, but just because of where we are and who we know and our relationships, we're really concentrated on the I eighty-nine quarter, and basically going down to Benton. So we really focus on that. We do a little bit, we've actually been virtually in Bradford and St. John's Bay this summer, but. But, you know, I think, you know, just, and again, I'll say, as someone who comes to Northfield a lot for hockey practice and to ride my bike and for various reasons, like, you know, Northfield's definitely a town that I think is a really good, has, you know, great place to start a business. And, you know, just like I feel the same about Montpelier, and I feel the same about Barry these days too, that there's a lot to look forward to. And that, you know? Sad to say, but maybe the growth is, you know, just feel like, it feels like it's starting to percolate in central Vermont, based on what I've seen on the last fifty years or so of living here, so, but we'll see.
I agree. Any other questions?
Oh, I wanted to say one more thing. The other thing is that there would be the opportunity for private enterprises and, and people to donate to this fund alongside of you. So not only could it be the town putting in twenty-five thousand dollars, but, you know, like, there are business people out there who are interested in supporting economic development in our towns. And so it would have that additional flexibility where if you had, you know, you know, I'll just tell you an example of what I've seen. We did a, there was, there's a Nepalese restaurant in Montpelier called the Kate Sherbrooke, which is kind of right, right next to the Savoy Restaurant. And during the flood, his home in Barry was destroyed, and his house was destroyed in the flood. He was one of the only people I know that had both impacted. He couldn't find, we, he started working with us, and we launched a GoFundMe for him. He was really on the fence about it, but he ended up raising twenty thousand dollars through his GoFundMe. But somebody, and I was known to match the entire thing and put in an entire twenty thousand dollars on top of it to help him out. So we've definitely found that, they're not everywhere, but there are people who are interested in supporting causes like this and investing alongside towns. And, you know, just, again, the number, just doing, trying to do as many loans to as many businesses as we can and have that option. So it's valuable for that, so.
Over to you.
I'm good.
Charlie?
My mom was gonna have more questions, but right now I'm stumped.
I'm, I'm happy to come back any time to answer questions.
So, I guess, consensus that one of.
So, I guess it's the consensus that, uh, one of, have, uh, how, can the, these folks put together the MOU? Is there consensus?
Well, I think that is going to be a decision. Consensus is, I, I support it, but I think the decision's going to be through the loophole in the agenda with the ARPA funds.
Yep.
So we'll come out of ARPA, we'll decide, uh, we'll make a decision there and then of course the MOU will be, will, will follow.
And then that'll come back to the board.
Yeah, well, I think we're going to have to have some instruction about, about parameters to, which we'll do that to.
Which will be spelled out in the MOU.
Yeah.
The parts about like the fricking mortar versus home base question.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's something to think about, you know, do you, I mean, there's only so many fricking mortar businesses. But, you know, it's also true that there are people working in their bedrooms who have very vibrant businesses as well who are, you know, supporting their families in the town. So I don't think there's any reason not to devote, um, our group. You know, the Montclair Foundation, their fund, they only do mountain brick and mortar, but that's kind of, but they pivoted during the floods in these, in these grants for everybody else.
I just hope that, uh, we can shorten, we don't have to extend this decision and kick the can down anymore, kick, kick the can down the road anymore. We can make a decision. There's, we have, we have an applicant ready to apply and it's been a long time, uh, to get to where we are right now. And I would really like to see that that can come to fruition sooner rather than later.
Um, I think that I could have an MO, you meet every, after a week.
You've got a manager.
I can help twice a month.
We've got a manager.
Second, and then a fourth Tuesday.
But the manager can help us out too.
Yeah, I can check with my council, but I think we could probably, I mean, probably have a meeting after next, this third meeting. We could have something ready to go, so.
Great.
Yeah, I definitely.
The third meeting?
Well, not two weeks, I guess six weeks. Either, I have to check on my, the council to see what availability is, but I don't, I definitely don't think we could have something ready for the next meeting, but either the one after that or the subsequent one, I think would be.
So it'll be the second one in October or the first one in November, which is too far away, isn't it?
Oh, gosh. You too. Haven't you been in municipal government like?
I know, I only.
I know, and I've been fighting bureaucracy the whole time I've been in there.
I could have a draft. I, I don't think I could have it done in two weeks, but I definitely could do a draft MOU for a week, uh, for a month away. You know, with the, yeah.
It's reasonable.
I have lots and lots of drafts to do and, uh, to look at and, um, and like I said.
Yeah, a lot of other towns got ARPA money too.
So we are, small businesses as well.
So Cookie Cutter MOUs, I mean, he's gonna cut and paste Northfield to whatever he's got existing. Is there anything that we want to, uh, guard against?
Well, I think, don't we want to talk about this during ARPA? Are we getting ahead of ourselves to talk about it now?
I don't know. He's, he, are you gonna stay here during the ARPA discussion or are you gonna leave? You're gonna stay?
Are you talking about Dexter later?
It's not too far away.
It's, I don't know, depends on how long it takes us to approve bills and approve the minutes from the last.
That's typically, that's typically pretty bad.
Our agenda is not that bad. I would predict that you would have time enough to go down the cornerstone, have a beer, come back and we'll be ready.
I'm happy to stay.
Thank you.
I'll stay right here. Thank you very much. Thanks, thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Alan.
They didn't have any PBR.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes.
Uh, move the minutes of September 10th. And by the way, thank you, uh, Mr. Rob, for being here.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Second. Moving to second, the comments question is Charlie.
I'm good.
Mary?
On page three, uh, on the section seven, part B, it says, "Northfield Police Station Will Include Bunkers." I think there was another word we wanted to use, right?
Bunkers.
Bunkers maybe? I don't know.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
Cots? I mean, I thought cots.
I thought it was, but bunkers made me laugh. It's like, really? We're gonna have bunkers in the Northfield PD? Are they gonna have little, little, uh, you know?
Bunkers.
Yeah.
I think that the, the intent was to say bunkers.
I know, that's why I said it, but I'm enjoying the laugh.
So what's the correct word?
Cots, I think.
Cots.
But I'm, can't tell you, Ken, I really liked bunkers. That was really fun.
Anything else, Mary?
That's all.
John?
I'm fine, thank you.
Lydia?
I'm good.
I'm good. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes of September 10th, 2024, as a minute, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Five zero zero. Approval bills.
Move approval of warrants zero six twenty-five and zero six twenty-five A through C for a total of $243,098.17.
Second. Moving to second, the comments question is Charlie. Good. Mary?
I'm fine.
John?
On page five, it seems like the Simquest Group sent us about a bunch of sand.
Yeah, so, um, I did notice that today, folks in accounting did, uh, miss go that, uh, which is a rarity to those folks. But, so it should have been, um, Tabor, um, so I would ask that the board approve the warrant minus that amount and then we can either do an offline check or, um, just have it on next time.
Why can't we just change the warrant at this meeting to Tabor?
But either way, actually, I think either way would be acceptable.
Right, just change it to Tabor.
Okay, yeah, either, either way is fine.
Anything else, John?
Yeah, fourteen Western Star seems to be having all sorts of troubles.
Yeah, um, we are in the process of replacing that, but, uh, yes, it is having some issues. Those trucks are older and it, uh, they're driven hard.
Yeah, it's ten years old, so. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Lydia?
I'm good.
All right, so I would look for an amendment, um, that we change on page five, that we change to Bender from Simquest to Tabor.
That's a friendly amendment.
Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of approving warrant zero six two-five and zero six two-five A through C in the amount of $243,098.17, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? Five zero zero. More bills.
Oh, uh, biweekly payroll, uh, move approval, uh, move receipt of the biweekly payroll for a total of $123,530.17.
Second. Moving to second, any comments or questions from the select board?
No.
One sec. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor of receiving biweekly payroll through September 15th, 2024 in the amount of $123,530.17, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Five zero zero. Next item on the agenda on the select board is the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA fund requests. In our packet, you have been given the latest, um, status report on fund balances and, um, Mr. Manager, do you like to go over that with detail with us?
Sure, um, yeah, so we provided, uh, the accounting department provided two sheets. First, um, the one that's kind of showing up and down versus the diagonally is, um, there is the, just a basic summary which you have received thus far. The summary, uh, as you can see, um, tried to divide it up on ongoing project and designated funds versus completed projects. So as you can see up top, the total completed project to date is $668,641. And then funds not fully expended, $1,281,414. Um, then you go down below, um, and it does provide, um, the projects that are ongoing that have been approved. Some of the bigger ones is the sidewalk budgeted, um, as you recall, um, we're out doing engineering on that. The engineering is pretty well done. I'll bring that to the board the next meeting and then we'll go out to bid and get a contract. So that will basically meet the, um, requirement to have those funds allocated. Some of these other projects are pretty close to being completed. Uh, for example, the generators, those should be going in shortly, but those are, $83,000 of those dollars are, uh, have met the ARPA requirement of being allocated. So again, it's just a tally of what we're working on, um, place the order for the seeding, um, working with, uh, the school on the, uh, Garvey Hill and Town Forest. As you can see, some of these others, we're probably not going to be able to allocate, like the Wall Street pedestrian improvement match. So more than likely in the next few weeks or probably in a month, we'll come forth with a resolution to have the board, um, make a motion to put those funds in the general fund as we talked about, um, many times. So again, there's just that breakdown. And then the other sheet, um, which is, um, just an update of the payments. See at the bottom, total expenditures and obligations, $948,573. Undesignated ARPA balances, $195,749.
Everyone up to date with that?
Up to date.
Any questions regarding these two?
I have a question.
Yes, Mary?
Jeff, do you think that we're on track to spend the money?
Yeah, I feel, uh, pretty confident that we are. Again, that, that, that one big chunk is the $500,000.
Yeah.
I feel confident that we'll have a, a contract and oblige those in November. Um, so that's one of the big ones. So you take that 500 off the table, you know, it leaves again the 136,000, uh, the 40,000, um, for the trails.
The DMK contract one, that one's pretty.
Pretty well done, yeah.
Done, right?
Yeah.
It'd be really great if you could like scrutinize this heavily to get to us like the, because a lot of these arguments, we're pretty confident they're gonna be taken care of, but what's the like true amount that we're not confident is going to be meeting the deadline for obligation?
Yeah, we, Laurie and I, we came out last week and starting towards that.
And is there anything we can do to push some of them?
Yeah, yeah. Do you need, what do we, what do you need us to do? All right, do I need to go out and buy some steel seeding? I mean, that's only 11K, but.
Right.
Oh, he's got to just execute a purchase on it, is that what he?
What's that?
For the seeding.
Seeding.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I think he said that.
Yeah, I think he did too. What's the 16,300 for the, for the generators? What's that, installation or something?
Deposit.
Are you looking at?
I think it's.
Oh, that's the remaining. It's not obligated yet.
Yeah, I know. Why isn't that obligated yet?
Well, there's gonna be some ancillary items needed to complete that.
Installation, that sort of thing.
Yeah, so the contractor is purchasing the contract, the generators, will install those generators, but there's gonna be some ancillary work needed, i.e. some additional piping and, um, some items related to propane and then some, uh, minor electrical objections.
Okay, okay. Like I, I'm just concerned that we leave, we don't want to leave a penny on the table. We're not that rich of a town.
So as I said, Laurie and I have been discussing over the last week, the, the resolution plus getting a very good handle on what that dollar amount that you'll very likely have to, um, put into a resolution and pull down.
Yeah, are they done with the community room kitchen update? Did they not need the full amount? Or is there still more they're working on?
I do have a call into Mary Ann and call three about that to see where that adds. There's still probably three or four thousand on the table.
Yeah, it looks like six here.
Yeah, well, she wants to strip the floor.
Okay.
Okay, in there.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we.
You want to spend the money, then go.
Oh, absolutely.
Put that into the space.
What about the footbridge overage? Can we decide that tonight or?
What is that?
You can or can't wait to see.
There's a bunch of footnotes on the box.
Yeah, I see them, I see it. And I, but I'm wondering, what is the footbridge overage?
The, we had put aside 55,000 for the pedestrian bridge.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Replacement of the plates and it costs more.
Okay.
I would say we should use the ARPA funds for it, but Jesse, you say you didn't want to do that previously when we discussed it?
Obviously, you can go either way. I think at that point, based on all the overruns on bridges plus, you know, getting down to 11th hour and more inclined to go towards the ARPA, using it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've come across the fact that we don't have a ton set aside for bridges and bridges are.
Orbals.
Yes, so.
And can, very, very.
I'd rather not take it from a CIP and use ARPA while, while we have it.
Can you tell me, was it really, uh, were we naive to think we could do this at, at the price we said? What was the overage? Why is it so much over?
So, uh, for budgeting purposes, we did get a quote, uh, like a year and.
Yeah.
Four months or so ago. And then unfortunately, as we all know, during the last year, prices had gone up substantially.
Materials?
Yeah, and also too, with, and not only that, but it's also unfortunately, it's supply and demand. A lot of these contractors have so much work, um, you know, will put a higher bid on a, a project and they're not as, I hate the term, they're not as hungry, so they'll put a higher bid on it. And if they get the project at a higher bid, they'll somehow try to figure out how to get it done or the dreaded delay, that's the other thing we found. So again, it's a combination of labor, materials and demand for contractors and the amount of work out there.
Should I make a motion to cover the overage or the pedestrian bridge with ARPA funds for the full amount of, is it 17,500? Is the full?
Yes.
Yeah. That's a motion.
Seconded. Further discussion, hearing none. All those, all those in favor of a motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, one item off the list. Next, E.B. Charger approved 11,000, current overage 761. Need to install ramp. What's that gonna cost?
Uh, roughly $2,500.
Should we wait on that till we know that?
Yeah, we'd wait until we know that.
So many lessons, what's that all about?
We had put the $2,000 in there.
And unfortunately, didn't, didn't have any favors.
I think, sorry to be a complainer, but I do not think that we told anyone in an effective way.
Yeah, that, yeah, we did get the word, but it could have been.
The word did not get out.
You asked a couple of times during regular board meetings about it.
I did.
And we did follow up later on, but not initially.
Yeah.
So I, I agree.
How much?
So it's a matter of if we want to do that, we need to do it in a more public, more, um.
We gotta communicate.
We gotta market it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we want to do that, if we want to do it. And have it all figured out too, because the details were, was it like free swimming lessons or was it only for some people free or, there was a whole bunch of confusion and, and I think that also led to.
So we don't need to make a motion. We can just tell them, take it off the, uh, the list.
Right.
Because it has not been expended.
Yeah, unless we wanted to try again next year, which again, then we can't, they'd have to go into the resolution, we'd have to.
So we could deal with that in the resolution and budget.
Yeah.
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 All right, so we discussed that. And then, um, one-third of the economic development operating budget for FY '26 is gonna be committed. Definitely know that's. Definitely know that's happening, right?
Correct.
So that's
But it can't be, don't we have to do that through the resolution too?
Correct.
So that will be part of that total number of them.
Yeah.
Who's keeping track of all the things that are gonna go in that resolution?
Lori and I.
Okay.
The two of us.
Don't let it, don't let, don't drop the ball.
No, no, we, we're both on it. We're both, uh, thinking about it.
So, um, there we are. Would you like to review any, uh, requests or any outstanding items that are on the master list?
The farmer's market matching funds. Tom, is there any, any action on that? Is, are we going anywhere with that? Is there any chance that we, the, the process where the PDF was rejected and it was supposed to be on an online, did, is there any movement on that or should we?
There's no movement, but that, that's, but there's no movement from them on anything. Uh, like is it completely dead? No, not, not at all, but
Well, we got seventy-five hundred dollars in here.
Yes.
And to the, that is supposed to be matching funds for the farmer's market.
Right.
We need to either pull that out or you need to tell us that, give us a little bit of time and we'll follow up on that.
Uh, I will put the full court press on them to answer our questions about the mix-up because they just ignored those emails. Uh, I will absolutely do.
Do they have a, a date where they're announcing grants?
They, they have not. They're very uncommunicated.
Okay.
And that's been the issue. They haven't really answered any emails.
Yeah.
Isn't seven thousand, where'd you get seventy-five hundred?
Seven, is it seven thousand?
Yeah, seven grand.
It's the one, third one from the bottom.
Yeah, it's the seven grand.
Can we talk about the revolving loan fund so that
Yeah, let's
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we put fifty thousand dollars into the revolving loan fund using all of the, uh, and, and make up the remainder with the existing revolving loan fund that we have. I don't know that budget number. I think it's twenty thousand.
Correct.
So that would mean thirty thousand from ARPA.
Okay. That was a motion.
Yeah, do you want me to reword it?
Yeah. It didn't make sense to me.
I did.
It said fifty and then it's thirty and twenty.
Yeah, say it again.
All right, I'd like, uh, make a motion to put fifty thousand dollars into the community capital of Vermont with ARPA funds making up the remainder from the community revolving loan fund.
All right, so you want a total of fifty thousand with twenty thousand that we currently have in the fund plus thirty thousand from ARPA?
Correct.
All right, I'll second your motion.
We've been seconded.
So total of fifty thousand, not fifty thousand and twenty, just?
That's right.
That's what we need to understand, do get.
We're just verifying the balance here.
All right, thank you.
It's rough, it's, it's roughly twenty thousand.
Well, you have it there, right?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Don't worry.
One question, Jeff, I have for, in terms of the ARPA funds and obligation stuff. Do we need to work it out that we actually give the money to community capital? Cause if we just have it sitting, will it not be considered obligated? That's a question to just figure out. I'm sure we can figure it out.
Well, they've got a fund that we can put it in. And it, it generate, and we get fifty percent of the interest, is that right?
Not sure. I haven't decided. We haven't figured that out yet, but we have, we, we can put it into our, our, you know, we could I think it probably would be best to put it into some bank account.
I'm sorry?
I think it would be best to segregate it in its own fund instead of putting in our general money market fund. So we would, we'd probably do is we would get it, put it in a bank in a CD. And then it would sit there and then, um, it could still be in your custody, but there would be a positive control agreement that said that it, we would give you notice that we need to access it. That's how we're accessing it.
And who gets to keep the interest on the CD fund?
I see no reason why you shouldn't be able to do that.
That will make Lori happy.
But I can also, I can also call the agency farmers and see if everyone has any thoughts on all of that, like maybe a CD. About whether it needs to be actually in, you know, uh, spent input, uh, arms length away from the town in some way.
Yeah, just the ARPA portion, we have some we've had to figure out some ways around the, the requirements in terms of, like, we can't just have it sitting there or consider it not.
Well, the, the MOU would cover that.
I think it would maybe, so it might, yeah, I'm sure we can figure that part out.
I will get on.
So we have a motion, we have a second further discussion. Do we have an update?
Yeah, it's, uh, I, I would say twenty thousand.
And this, I guess, is like pending, like if we approve it, it's pending working out an MOU and agreeing to that MOU too, like we need to
Money's not going anywhere until we have an MOU, you know that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Further discussion. Hearing all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Wise choice, select board. Upstaying five zero zero.
I'm gonna say that was way too quick.
You want us to kick it down the road again?
No, I mean, it takes a long, it's a resolution. It's not quick. I'm surprised.
Yeah.
Less, less documentation. Gonna be mixed up.
Do you have further questions for us or Tom for motion?
This is on ARPA? Are you, are you leaving the ARPA?
I don't think we're leaving ARPA, but just about the revolving loan fund. Just so you read it.
Great, um, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So continuing our, our perusal of this potential project list, is there anything that we're gonna take action on tonight?
Could we hear from Tom possibly about the other requests from the economic development director?
Why not?
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Appreciate it.
Thanks very much, Alex.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, I'll talk to you soon. Just one clarification, um, from the previous request that I put in to try to set aside funds for grant applications, matching funds. I just wanted to be clear on the fact that, that the way that I was proposing it, which of course is up to the board, but that, uh, any of those matching funds, first of all, whenever there was an opportunity for a grant that required matching funds, we go through the usual process. We work with Jeff and then the board approving before any application that obligates those funds takes place. But secondly, that it doesn't matter whether it's private, state, federal, or anything else, that my proposal was that was only for grants where the beneficiary was a municipality and not any private organization, enterprise, or business. So this is to get more money for things like the pedestrian walkway we have going from the common to Dogger Park and other programs over the Riverwalk or things like that. Uh, and that now that we are starting to work, uh, with Alex, we still have an instrument for private businesses that we can introduce them to. Plus I can always help them for money where they either have the matching funds themselves or it's a zero match. So we have plenty of options still for private and nonprofit organizations, but we have this option to do this. And that way we keep out of the, of mixing the decision of who's deserving the community or not, cause it's really pretty difficult. So I just wanted that to be clear.
So the recommendation you made was two hundred thousand?
That was my request, yeah.
Our interest continues to go up, so right now there's a hundred and sixteen thousand, I think. Seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-six cents in interest. So I propose to at least set aside that amount. If not some more, when we have a clear sense of, um,
What you have left?
What we have left that isn't obligated and that we need to put into a resolution. Cause so often, I mean
So let me ask the question then.
Yeah.
So how does obligating these funds in a revolving loan solve the ARPA disbursement requirement?
The, the revolving loan that we just
That we just approved?
No. Setting aside these funds, so how, how, how are we going to do that?
It will have to go in the resolution in the general fund.
And then we will
Except for the interest does not, and that's why I keep bringing up the interest.
All right.
The interest could just go straight in to this.
So that can be in account?
As, as long as I'm understanding it correctly.
Correct.
And then at, in budget time, we can add to that from the resolution total dollar amount.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm just think, for example, the Wall Street grant, like we were gonna get eighty percent from the federal government, but we had to have that twenty percent. And on a large project, it's really difficult for a town like us.
We got seven hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just to, to try to give ourselves a chance to have the opportunity for some of those things in the future, I really support
Very wise.
Setting some funds aside, um
And that's, that, that was in the ARPA mission.
Yeah.
That we do that and we were, but yeah.
So, so on that note, sorry, go ahead Dave. Well, just so I clear it my head, so let's say it's a hundred and twenty in interest.
Yeah.
No strings attached, we can do that as we see.
Yeah.
Then the eighty thousand potentially would come from the resolution
Yeah.
that would be folded into the general fund for that year.
Yeah.
Got it.
And then appropriate, proper budget.
Yep, all right. Charlie?
You just hung me up.
Sorry about that.
Thanks a lot, pal.
Sorry.
So, uh, as far as the budget goes, a big project of eighty-twenty is, you know, obviously we're doing a very smart thing by taking ARPA funds and building a matching fund, fun. During the budget cycle, uh, it would be interesting to get a projection of how much money is going to be used for matching funds. And should we budget a replacement, not full, but have that matching fund replaced through the budget at a smaller number? I'm making this up, but let's say, uh, we put ten thousand dollars a year every budget cycle into that fund for the purpose of having a, a, a large fund that is, cause raising was it forty thousand dollars for the, what's the eighty-twenty on this project?
The twenty is a hundred and ten thousand.
So raising a hundred and ten thousand dollars on a project where, uh, if we suddenly have it in front of us, we can afford it right now. But five years ago, six years ago,
No way.
it would have been a hundred and ten thousand dollars on the budget.
Hundred percent.
Right, so I think having, giving that eighty-twenty matching funds is common, we should have, we should continue to fund this line item.
Yeah, I agree.
Create a new line item so we have the matching fund in the budget.
If, if I could add a, a positive to that is if we know we have the funding that in-house for the matching and we agree we wanna go forward with a grant, and let's say it's a USDA grant or it's a state grant where scaffolding can take place where we can get the eighty percent from, let's say USDA. And the other twenty percent, we can go ahead and proceed with the process knowing we have the money, but then still find it from another source versus missing the deadline because we can't go after it unless we can get a fund, so that would be very helpful.
This is very encouraging.
And it would mean things like the farmer's market grants, well, no, wouldn't, that's not a municipal one, sorry.
That would be nonprofit.
But
This is just municipality.
But things like this that we've wanted to do before.
It's, it's the bridges, man. We get so many bridges.
The wall on, uh,
Yeah.
On this street here, um, Elm Street.
Yeah.
Right.
Lots of water ability.
What was that green match? We were discussing.
You mean that the town would need or?
Yeah.
Those, yeah, those typically are twenty percent match.
So that was thirty thousand. Now that was six hundred thousand.
Yeah, so it'd be another problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, so
Hundred and twenty. Yeah.
Well, another example is we have to do a complete inventory of all of our roads by two thousand twenty-seven, we're working to adjust on that process. And they'll fund their anticipated cost for that process, cause they've built an app for us to be able to do that. They'll supply about thirteen thousand and change. We have to come up with the other twenty thousand. If our road crew got really busy and couldn't do that in kind, we would have the cash to do it, so it's even things like that.
It's very good.
When we wanted to do the better connections grant, I think the match for that was actually pretty small, but the town really didn't have it. And so it was a challenge to figure out. We did figure it out, but it was a harder process than it would be if we had this set up.
So this resolution that, uh, you, refresh me about what this resolution is.
So the resolution is where we get a solid number that we have with remaining ARPA funds that have not been committed
Correct.
or spent. And we turn, and we make a version that we're gonna turn that into the, fold that into the general fund of the town, in this term, here, general fund, I would assume, the best we could, we're in.
As, as a reserve.
Yeah, well, that would, it would come in as surplus.
Surplus.
And then so during the budget process.
So we can assign surplus, those earmarks for the, the projects we want to plug into the budget. So then the other question that just popped into my mind that pop, popped earlier. Are any of these funds we're discussing need to be voter approved?
If you're going to designate them specifically, you have to reserve them.
Well, it, it depends.
So you can't, so from the floor, you have to have an article warned for the purpose to, to put those, take those funds and put them somewhere else.
If, if you put those in a, in a reserve fund.
So let's say we put this, a dollar amount into a fund for matching grants. That has to be a voter approved?
You can do it by resolution, which means if the board changes or from the floor, it can, it can be, uh, from the floor of town meeting, it can be, uh, used. But if it's a reserve fund, then it has to, then the voters have to approve that you're gonna do something different than what it's reserved for. Got it?
Who else speak?
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're still on ARPA?
I'll leave you this, not, cause you don't need anymore. One thing that has happened because of these grants that we've gotten so far and the improvements we're making between the future of the Riverwalk and this Wall Street to Dogger Park is the influx of calls and interested developers into my office has been significant.
Oh, wonderful.
And more and more people, because when I get on the phone with them and say, well, we're doing this and we're replacing sidewalks on the high school and we've got this long list, they're saying even the state agencies are saying, oh my gosh, you have a lot of things going on. And that attracts more funding from private investments, so that's a very great positive. I appreciate all your help on that.
Tom, uh, this never happened before you were here.
Wow.
Just let you know, that last email on the project list, I don't remember if you copied the whole board on that.
I think I did.
But you're doing a really good job.
Well, thank you.
You are, you are an asset for Northfield.
Thanks, Mary, I'm out, Chuck, I appreciate that.
And that's pretty significant.
I know, I'll take it in the run.
And that's not
Hey, one more.
And that's not pollination. Further discussion on ARPA now, we are reletting American Legion, um, just go away now. Since there's been no response.
Well, I think
Take it off the list.
I feel like we should vote on it.
Yeah, that's a
Okay, that's what I want to ask.
We don't know, we have, we have not had any more
What did you guys want? Because they had already broken it out in their projects. What did you want for more?
I, I didn't want, I think Mary and Charlie wanted
Remind me what you wanted more.
Oh, sure, remind me, I, well
Sorry.
Let me look up mine.
Well, they were pretty specific on what they were requesting.
I think it was about the HVA system and the electrical system.
Oh, you guys had to
And from what I understand, and from what I understand, they've already gone forward with, I, I think the, uh, upgrade of the electrical.
And there was also the roof. Tom wants you to remember the roof.
Another roof.
Yeah, what, what were your, I mean, is there something you needed to know to make a decision that?
Well, so what I've got, uh, or what I kept, there may be something else. But they said, uh, upgrade aging, aging electric infrastructure. They didn't say the, the value of that.
They said twenty-five thousand for that one.
What did you?
There was a, there was an original copy we got and then there was a corrected copy. And the corrected copy has the dollar.
It had to break down?
Yeah.
Well, isn't that just random? So what did I do with that?
Do you wanna look at mine?
Sure.
I would like this for some of the time.
As would I. As would I. Where's the gray building? Gray building?
The date.
I haven't received some dates.
It was received by Minister.
Oh, I have, I have that one.
And then the one we got in person was the night of the meeting.
Oh, it's probably.
Yeah.
Let me just take a second and write this down, it's the same language, they just put.
Yeah, they just added.
Can you share that with us as you're writing?
Yeah, number one was, uh, uh, aging electric infrastructure, twenty-five thousand. The gen, the next one, AM two, is a generator, fifteen thousand. The roof, which is number three, is twenty-five thousand. HVA system is twenty thousand, that's number four. Number five is ten thousand. The atrium, number six, is twenty-five thousand.
Yep, that's the roof, I think, on that thing.
Repair atrium to eliminate leaks and replace panels with maximum energy efficiency glass. I think the atrium is that, uh, as you walk in to the front. And the last one is number seven, uh, kitchen improvements, thirty thousand dollars. Thank you, Lydia. John, can you pass that back?
No.
Well, we've done a roof before. And, um, where's my roof now? That was twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Yes.
I make a motion to provide twenty thou, twenty-five thousand dollars in ARPA funds to repair, replace aging roof to protect the integrity of the structure.
Second. Discussion. Well, you were talking about the American Legion not being open to everybody.
That's right. They do have fundraisers that they open it up to.
Yes.
But, uh, they, uh, as far as the general public, and I am speaking out of turn because I don't actually know, I think you, as a veteran, uh, can go in there, I think it's five times, and then there's, you've exhausted your freebies, it's not, it's time to join the legion. I don't know, I don't go there, but, uh, that was, I, I brought that up because, uh, the, uh, it is somewhat restricted on a day-to-day basis, but they are there for blood drives and fundraisers where you get the breakfast and the Thanksgiving dinners and things, and that, that's community-wide.
Yeah, and I also, my opinion is I believe they're a very important part of the community and they do a lot of stuff for the community.
I, I have a question. How are they different from a church? I mean, a church does things for the community and they might need a new roof, but they're private.
What's stopping the church from asking?
I'm just saying.
No, I, I.
Yeah, a, a, a church become, anybody, we have not restricted, uh, ARPA appropriations to any group.
Yeah.
So we're just responding to the folks that have asked and, uh.
Well, we asked for an MOU from Norwich University for seventy-five hundred dollars to, to, to do a, a disc golf thing. And now we're not asking anything, we're going to give them twenty-five thousand dollars and I can't go there.
Okay.
I mean, I, a, as a person, just as a represent, as an individual who you said not, it's not open to the public, it's not open to me.
Okay.
Unless I want, unless they're doing a blood draw.
So if you look at their list, and I'm, I'm not advocating, but that's pretty significant, what they do for the community. Using, using that facility.
Right, that's what, twenty-five items that are, uh, that, that support the community with? Yes, you can't go in there, I don't know their hours. Uh, I know I could go in there because I've got a military ID card.
Yeah, and, and private, and private businesses are also have limited access. There's private hours.
They open up their, their legion every Sunday for the public to go for breakfast. So there's no reason why it shouldn't be allocated to them.
And the Friday night grill is open to the public as well.
Yeah.
And not shut out totally.
Well, we have a motion, we have a second. And we're having further discussion, are there any further discussions? All those in favor of the motion, say yay.
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 Against, nay.
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 Abstaining. Motion passes.
Send them over.
Two, zero, thank you. And that's off our list. And as, again, I'll thank the board, when the rubber hits the road, we make some tough decisions.
Okay, so you changed that from that to that.
Is there anything on the list currently, so we need an update from Norwich University, um, regarding this, can we have it the next meeting?
Absolutely, yeah. They're aware of it, but I'll remind them.
Is that about the, uh?
The stuff?
MOU regarding the discount, disc golf.
Well, we already, didn't we already agree to that MOU they made?
No, I, well, there was, I thought there was a concern about.
Well, yeah, I had a bunch of concerns about it.
Yeah, and so those were related, related, the big concern was.
We're waiting for a final document.
They, because the big concern was they wanted to have the, because I recall the ability to.
Shut it off to the.
Yeah, let you say it that way, sure.
That's true. We discussed it.
So we leave that, Dr..
Yeah.
Um, is there anything else?
Will it be open once a week? On Friday nights?
I'll take that under advisement and get back to you, how's that, Mary?
Okay.
Is there anything else on the list, obviously we're in flux with the farmer's market. Really nothing that's requiring us to take action. Um, well, did we take action on the clerk utility bill, billing system?
No, it's still working into.
Yeah, I don't think we've taken action on it because they're still trying to figure out.
Yeah, we're having a difficult time finding alternatives.
Any alternatives at all? Do other towns have difficulty now?
I would say so.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, so.
Yeah, we reached.
Marsold does, I know that.
Mars Killier does.
Yeah.
So let's not reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
What we already use and charging people or how do they?
Part of it is the clerk is using, uh, UNIS software system. And not to throw stones, anytime we make any changes, they blast us and they charge enormous amount. And we're so entrenched with that system.
Those are big decisions, soon to come down the pipe.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that the board would like to discuss regarding ARPA this evening?
I'm good.
So, Jeff, just from a timeline perspective, when can the board expect a final detailed accounting and then oppose resolution?
Ori and I are still working on it, but I'm hopeful that we can, uh, do that second meeting in October.
Good. Alright. Are we all done with ARPA tonight? Good.
And just please tell us if there's anything we can do to help fast track anything so that we can get things obligated.
Next item on the agenda is disorderly conduct ordinance, just our signatures are required on the document, that's correct, right? Correct. So very good.
I have one question about that, I was asked by a, a member of the community. Everybody wants to talk about it as a noise ordinance, but it's actually a disorderly conduct ordinance. And, um, so they can't find it when they go looking for ordinances, they go looking for a noise ordinance and there isn't one. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we could put an asterisk or something on there and say.
If someone's, you should be able to, uh, point your search engine, if it says you're looking for noise ordinance, there should be a way to point that to disorderly conduct.
Yeah, I'd like that.
That's something that, uh, can be done in-house, I don't know how to do it, but I can ask Cassie, she's a coder now.
That, that would be really, really helpful for your average resident who's been looking to, you know, every time there's a party up at Norwich, they start looking for noise ordinances and there isn't anything there and, and, and I have to, then I say, well, yeah, it is, but it's called a disorderly conduct.
I think one of the things that we're going to experience with any ordinance in town, and we have a discussion, uh, over, uh, the dog, hybrid dog ordinance, the letter that was thing, we got a dog ordinance. What I'm trying to get at is for enforcement to occur.
Yeah.
Someone is going to have to, the, the complainant needs to, uh, have a, uh, signed affidavit at the police department. First off, it creates a, uh, in their system, it creates a marker for something that's been a complaint, so if my neighbors are complaining because I'm doing something they object to, if they have a signed affidavit at the police department, that builds a data bank up.
About you.
About the complainant. And, uh, I don't know if, if that's a public record or not, but, uh, for these, uh, disorderly conduct issues, the, I think the residents need to be aware that cops are not necessarily going to be patrolling, looking for violations. First off, we only have a couple of cops. And secondly, uh, the, which leads to what I've just said, that if someone's lighting up, uh, being disorderly, someone's going to have to call up and there's going to be a statement that needs to be made. So that just adds into pointing to, uh, the search engine pointing to the, to the ordinance as well as understanding, you're going to need to fill out a, an affidavit.
So that should be on the, on the website as well, saying if you want to make a complaint, you need to file an affidavit.
When they make the complaint, I think the, well, that's, if, if the chief wants that, that's.
I could just, on the website, which is disorderly conduct ordinance, it's AKA noise ordinance.
Yeah.
That should help people. I could do that tomorrow.
Cool.
If, if it, then when they do the search, you put it in the search bar, it'll come up.
Page for ordinances, they go to that page and they'll see it there.
Yeah. Yeah, and maybe it should just say disorderly conduct and noise ordinance, because it's, it is both things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's about radios and televisions and other things besides.
Yeah, and also engaging in fighting and in violent tumultuous or threatening behavior. They're paired together, so.
All of them are going to need an affidavit.
Yes.
And I spoke to the police chief on the night on the common and he said he only, only had two complaints about the noise on Jarvis Lane. And he also explained to us that after the group was here and they made some comments about individuals being felons, that was flushed out and that was not the case. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah, that's what he told me. Because he would have got an ATF after him.
Yeah. So, we only can do so much.
It's like the old telephone game, isn't it?
Next item on the agenda is town managers report.
Alright, thank you. Um, Main Street waterline tank replacement project. After the last board meeting, I did notify the state of Vermont, uh, the town's intent to award two contracts for that project, one is the waterline project, which the intent to award to Jay Hudson and then the tank replacement to a company called Preload. Next step in that process will be the, for the state to give the town final approval to proceed, which I'm hoping within the next few weeks. It's unfortunate looking like those projects won't be able to start until spring of, of next year. Uh, we did discuss the idea of the concept of closing Central Street for Halloween. Um, the chief and I are the support of, of doing that, closing, uh, the street for a couple of hours. If there's no objections, we'll go ahead and move forth with that, obviously we'll do plenty of, uh, public notice. Main Street Bridge Replacement Project and Cross Brothers Dam Removal Project. Uh, last week, we had a very productive meeting with myself, Jim Russo and representatives from AOT, working on the bridge replacement project, and then Karina Daly, plus, uh, folks from the engineering, from doing the final plans for the dam removal, again, it was just another meeting, just to make sure we're all on the same page about the various items and how these two projects will, um, jive, so to speak. You know, the main kind of discussion was over timing. Again, both entities, both the, the state working on the bridge have confirmed that the project is a go for twenty twenty-six and engineers and Karina Daly for the dam removal confirm that the dam will be removed in twenty, uh, twenty-five. Plus, we just worked on some other minor issues, just protecting sewer lines in the river, plus access to the project. Unfortunately, uh, there was discussion about the town's effort to put in a river path along, um, in, along the edge of, obviously. Uh, the state, uh, the folks from, working on the engineering, uh, for the dam removal, plus Karina Daly, are confident that that project can be incorporated into the, um, into the overall project or the river, river path can be incorporated into that process and they'll make provisions to accommodate that effort. So, again, very productive meeting. As an aside, real quick, the agency transportation is working towards finalizing engineering plans, uh, for the bridge project. They're hopeful to be able to get something to the select board in the next couple of months to, to have you, uh, folks look at that. I think that covered it for now.
Next item on the agenda, board members' comments concerns questions, Charlie.
Well, in the letter that we got regarding, uh, I think it was Highland Avenue, there was, I didn't see a mention about the dog ordinance, the animal control ordinance. So we, we've got the health officer identifying, but it, but I think it would be good to let them know that there is an ordinance that, uh, can cost them money.
Yeah, so that, that, with the citation, the police department, um, showing them the ordinance provided that, plus those folks, uh, did come into my office and we had a lengthy discussion, I showed them all that, so that's good. Yep.
Okay. And when, so tonight, when John brought up that Simquest is, uh, getting paid for sand and you acknowledged that, yes, you discovered that. I would prefer, after we have discussion about the warrant, that before we start going around, it would be nice if you know that there's something that needs to be corrected, tell us in, in, upfront and not wait, because if John hadn't caught it, I missed it.
She caught it.
No, I missed it too.
Oh, you did?
Well, I did, I did know that, that the chair and the vice, or I'm sorry, the, the chair and Lydia, no, but.
Well, this is a communication thing.
It's just because I was here.
I literally found out in about five minutes.
Alright.
Anyway, I'm good, thank you. Mary?
Oh, I have one, excuse me.
Yeah, go.
We have the ability to put chloride on roads. And for those folks of you that live on pavement, the last two weeks, I invite you, before it rains, to take a look at the sides of the road. That's not fungus that's growing on the vegetation on the side of the road.
There's dust.
That's dust. That's dust. And it was horrible. And it needs not to happen. The grader goes down the road, the chloride truck follows it, and it did. But either the solution was off or we're using the wrong chloride. But it did not work on a section of Smith Hill, and all those people had to suffer. And if you really want to know what it's like to be a selectman who lives on the back road, come to the farmer's market, stand with me, and listen to what you've got to hear about the folks that live on the back roads, because there's only one of us that does, and it needs to be addressed. We cannot let that happen like it did the last 10 days.
Yeah, so they, they did chloride those roads, and it was a flake material they're using. And so they've got to go, go back to more of a liquid type of.
Indeed. I'm glad that you've identified the problem and it can be addressed, because it was bad.
I know. I, I drove the roads a couple of times.
You didn't come up to my house. What's up with that? I was going to invite the, the select board, and it's periodically just to drive up Smith Hill so you can see what I was talking about. You could not.
No, I drive up.
You, you had to stop when someone, when you met somebody on Smith Hill between Stony Brook and Doyle on the west side.
Is that why your car turned from red to brown?
Indeed. You had to stop because there was no vision. There was no visibility. Please, don't let that happen again. Now, Mary, I turn over my rant to you.
Good, because I have a new rant. I, I would like the town to keep in the future in mind when, I, I would like the town to keep the future in mind when we make decisions about the present. For example, geothermal. And I was at that information session on geothermal. And I would like the town to consider in future, any, any future engineering that we consider how we can prep for geothermal eventually. So we have to add pipe. It's just annoying to townspeople that we keep digging up these things and then we put it, one thing down and then we close it. And then we dig it back up again and put another thing down. This is, I hear about that too, so.
Yeah, that was, that was a good, that was a good conference.
That was a good conference about geothermal, but it, it reminded me of when I hear from townspeople about how they keep digging up the Main Street and putting a new thing down. And I know we've got some new stuff coming and going down. Can we make sure that we consider in future, oh, we might need to put some, something down there that we need to have ready for future infrastructure? Am I making myself clear?
No, I understand, because I agree with you saying.
Yeah.
I mean, to, it's quite a project to implement townwide geothermal system.
The whole system, yeah. But if we could put pipe there. For example, Norwich University is going to ask, is asking us to give up a road. In return for giving up the road, couldn't we say to them, when you dig up there in front of the fusion center, that you consider adding, putting pipe there, even cap it? And then later, when, if, when, so that when we have these things, opportunities, that we consider, oh, what might we be doing in the future? Because I have to admit, we're making decisions for our children and our grandchildren here. And so we need to think about that. The second thing I wanted to bring up is that I have been interested in permeable surfaces. And, and I have, was first, I read about them, and then I found one, them in California, and now I found them in Vermont. And I had, there were questions about whether or not these surfaces could be, were accessible for people to roll on. And so Mary Naden Scott went up to Burlington where this surface is, and she rolled all over it and sent me pictures, which I shared with John, because he's on the, on the committee with me. And that, that these surfaces are quite visible. She said they're the best surfaces she's been on.
No, were these parking lots, sidewalks?
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, were these parking lots, sidewalks?
I've seen them both. I've seen parking lots and I've seen sidewalks. This one up in Burlington is a sidewalk down by the, by the waterfront there. And if, I can send you pictures of it. But it, it's like, there's little solid pieces of co, of cement. And in the interstices are some, and it's, and it's permeable and it's permanent. And she can roll over on it. All kinds of people can use it. And it's more environmentally conscious than any other surfaces that we're using at the present time. So we need to keep our eyes open.
Sure.
For things like that. That's all.
John?
Well, I heard about the plans for the Vine Street crosswalk, so they're going to be here next week or something. The cameras on the covered bridges, so I am sorry, going back to Vine Street. Vine Street, the plans for the retaining wall and the sidewalk and the bump outs, et cetera.
What's the status?
You said the engineers were about done.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So we'll present those to the board.
Yep. Okay. Cameras on the covered bridges. What's this? We got anybody?
Yeah, so we, we've tried, or two folks, and we're now haggling with their insurance companies. So yeah, we've had some success. We've got folks.
Okay. Is the Mosley Bridge fixed?
No, but it is on the list. I was up there yesterday looking at that same panel, sorry, same panel. And so I was up there looking and I asked it to Carl, and he said that they jump on it.
Okay. Sugar maker up on town property. What's the status of, has he got another year on his contract or?
Yeah, so this is the final year of the contract, as you recall. And then the, the select board combined the two lease agreements into one and gave that person a couple of, four or five more years. And so that contract does end. But yeah, this is the last season for that person to do the sugaring, so then it'll end.
The season we just had or the one that's coming up?
Coming up.
Twenty-five?
Correct, yeah.
That's all I got. What do you?
I'm all good.
So, question. What streets are getting paved and when do you anticipate them getting paved?
Yeah, so we have sent letters out and, and put something on front porch form. So we are paving Dickinson Drive.
Like entirety of Dickinson Drive?
Yeah. Doian.
Doian.
And E Street. And so we have sent letters. And I'm hopeful that they'll, I've finally nailed down the paving contractor. So they're going to come in the end of next, or the end of next week and grind just E Street. And then they're going to pave the others the week of October seventh.
Do you need to coordinate with soccer books at all on Doian with the paving?
You know, I mean, that, there's going to be overlays, or there won't be grinding, and it's only going to, you know, take at the most two days to do that project.
Yeah.
You know, I can definitely let those folks know. Again, we have sent letters to everybody.
Yeah.
But that's a good idea.
So you triggered something when you said Doian Drive, Doian Road. About a year and a half ago, I asked you what the status was with the sidewalk up there. And I took a ride up there all three days ago, and it's in no better condition than it was a year and a half ago.
Yeah, I think.
What's the ultimate plan for that sidewalk? I mean, there's no maintenance. There's weeds growing up. It's just, why aren't we mowing?
I guess we should have a conversation about whether it's one to keep or to let go.
Well, residents who live there came, came to me a year and a half ago, and they asked me the other day, why is our sidewalk not being maintained? So I'm just asking.
No, that's seriously very legit.
Yeah, I'm just saying we either, we should either maintain or, or make a decision. I'm agreeing with you.
Yes, yes. No, I understand totally. I'm just bringing it up again.
Yeah.
Because, just the Doian, I asked them about it the other day. All right, I'm, I'm good. Public participation unscheduled. We have lots of people. Lynn, first.
Okay, I have a couple of easy questions, then I have a couple of irritating questions. The police department, what are we going to do with that department? Is it going to function or are we going to shut it down? I've called down there twice so far. One time I had a guy shooting on Route 12A down below my house. I called the police department. I get state police. I'm told Norfolk doesn't have any police. Okay, so this started at 10 minutes tonight. I gave him to five minutes after nine. While I'm talking on the phone to the dispatcher, guess what happens? He shoots seven more times. So what I get from the dispatcher? If we got a trooper available, we'll send them out. That, that's nonsense. I called one other time. I don't remember what it was, because it gets so irritated with that.
So Lynn, can you tell me exactly when that was?
Oh, God, it was about two weeks ago. I don't know. I didn't keep track of the time.
And you did, and you did call, call in and you lodged a complaint?
Yep.
Okay.
And if we have a trooper available, we'll send them out. Well, that's really good. And while I'm talking to him, like I say, he shoots off seven more times. Okay, I called one other time. Got the same thing. Nope, police don't, Norfolk don't have any police on tonight. Okay?
I may, if I can address it, that's, you know.
But that's not bringing this to you guys' attention, because something's got to be done with this department. It's out of control now.
Could I, it's not, Lynn, it's unfortunate. It's like many police departments, they're short-stopping. There's some police departments where they're down to one or two officers, and they're actually thinking of going to the sheriffs, because it's not working out. Montpelier is down, seven officers. Barry Citi is down, a number of officers. They're offering $10,000 to $15,000 bonuses. It's not anything that's going on with your department. It's just a lack of officers. You know, we're trying our best to bring officers. But again, some departments are to the point where, you know, they're going to disband and have the sheriff, because they can't keep it together. It's not an issue just for Norfield. Every municipality, again, Montpelier is down, seven officers. They're not 24/7. They're just on call. It's the same situation. So I just, you know.
Um, can you be, can you say, when is RPD on and when is state cop, state trooper coverage?
At this point, for the most part, the state police is covering night times. We do have an officer who's on military leave that is filling some shifts at night now, so that's helping out. But unfortunately, it's mostly at night due to lack of officers that state police are having to step up.
And they will only come for certain types of incidents, correct?
So what was the incident? Were they, they weren't shooting at you, because I know you.
No, they're down there shooting. My dog was so scared, he was under my desk.
Where was this, Lynn?
On 12A. I don't know where exactly, but he was off approach, approximately to one chill.
So we just passed a, an ordinance that would address the noise associated with certain zoning districts, high-density zoning districts like where we are now. But there is no restriction for people shooting guns, for people shooting out where we live. So I mean, we, I can tell you about all my neighbors that like to light up the, and it's annoying. But there's, there's no restriction for them.
When it's nine o'clock at night and it's dinner, there's, there's a little concern there.
Right, no, I agree. I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you, Lynn. It's, it's a pain and it's, it's very annoying to.
Really, and that is against the ordinance if it's, if it's a half hour after sunset everywhere.
Then if it's at, if the ordinance says it's a half hour after sunset, then there should be a response.
But not in the state, I mean, there are, the state is short-stopped as well. It's unfortunate.
So, but you didn't know who, you, you didn't go down there and, and find out who it was? You know, you don't know. Okay.
No, because I figured we had a police department, got our money they budgeted for, to run for a year. They should, we should have something down there. If they, if we can't stop it, we should just get rid of it and just abandon the whole thing, do like Waterbury and Randolph did, shut it down for a year, figure out what we're going to do, and then start back up again with a plan to go ahead with this thing. Because right now, we're just like a bunch of fish floundering out of water. They're on the ground, they have their flounder, and nobody knows what to do, anything. There's no reason the chief can't work during the day and let another officer come in at night and work, and then rotate the shifts around. He's supposedly certified now. About time he started doing his job. One incident was, we had a domestic up on Vine Street where the kid kicked the door in, slapped the girl across the face, punched her. We waited 20 minutes for state police to respond, because they're all the way over in Orange. He could have killed that girl within the 20 minutes. Okay, this is the police department. This is not, this is no, nothing against Jeff, because this police department's been in turmoil for the last 20 years.
So this is emergency services that respond to a call, find out what the situation was, and you called.
So state police got there before we did.
Right.
Because they finally called us when they got there and said, this girl needs to be looked at. But this is another situation where if, if we're going to have a police department, they got, we're going to have them there. If we're not going to have one, let's get rid of them and just either contract with the state police like Waterbury did, or just shut it down for a year, contract with the sheriff's office, and then figure out what we're going to do with this department. It seems though we're spending an awful lot of money on a department that's not on half the time. State police are responding. Hundred and nine times last year, they responded to Norfield.
We did have a surplus in the police department, because we are not spending funds when the state police are covering.
And how much are they charging us to come to Norfield every time?
The state police, they do not charge. They are legally required.
Oh, they probably will before we get done with them. But something's got to be done to that department down there. This is just getting to be too dangerous and too. People go to bed at night thinking we've got a police, police officer out there roaming around, and we don't. We don't have anybody out there. So if somebody's breaking into somebody's house, it all depends on where the state police are, is where they're going to get there before somebody gets killed by some, having somebody run at their house.
The thing is, if we shut it down, because right now, we do frequently have a police officer in town who can respond. If we shut it down, we would have the state covered all the time and those response times.
But either you could have sheriff's officers.
And it wouldn't be, I don't think, I don't know how Waterbury worked it out, but I assume the contract meant that they were paying.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Anyway, it's very, I agree with you.
And I saw, I heard, $386,000, and they have them posted in Waterbury Village for the state police to be there.
Okay.
And they don't come to anything other than physical domestics and motor vehicle accidents on the road.
Yeah. So it's limited in terms of.
Yeah, because they, they're, like Jeffrey's saying, they're, they're very shorthanded as well.
Yeah, yeah.
But we need to do something. The chief can work during the day, and then we can start having two officers that we do have working the night shifts. Even if we only work till two o'clock like we used to do. We did it for, I don't know how many years, when Burke Sanders was the chief. And, you know, we don't need 24-hour coverage in town Norfield. If they work till two o'clock, that would free up a lot of hours where we could have another, the two officers covering the town if they shoot.
Was this, I'm assuming this other incident on Vine Street was in the evening?
Nine o'clock, yeah, around, ooh, eight, nine o'clock, I think it was. It started in another town, came over to Norfield, and this time he kicked the door right off the hinges and went in, slapped her across the face. And then they had to come, and the state police were already there. Three troopers there. So we're taking up every trooper Washington County had for that night, you know, this, these knuckleheads up here. But something's got to be done before somebody gets hurt. And, you know, whether it's the chief working during the day, and then the two officers, he divvies up to two hours between the two officers, and they'll work till like one, two o'clock in the morning. And then just have somebody on call. That, that's fine. But people going to bed at night thinking we got people out here and we don't is, is getting a little ridiculous. And I'm not the only one. A lot of people are complaining about it, not seeing the police officers out here. You know, they used to, used to be able to see them walking the street when, obviously, when Chief Jennings was here. He was out walking the street all the time. You don't even see them now, because they're in the, the police station over there. I don't know what they're doing. I don't really care, but they're not out on the street where they're supposed to be. And they can't be that much paperwork for an officer for 40 hours a week. I don't care what they say, did that job for 40 years, never, never had that much paperwork that I had to stay in the office every minute of the day.
Well, I'm not to set to argue with you, Lynn. I, I know that you're not happy with the police department, but I see them out there quite a bit. I deliver meals on wheels. I see them patrolling. And they're on the back roads. They're in town. The chief always comes, some, somebody's always at the farmer's market. They're, I see them out in town quite a bit.
I, I see. They'll be getting out there then.
Well, when you, when you need five. Well, when you, when you need five and you got two, then we got, I mean, we want to have a full police department. We want to have the coverage needed to keep Northfield safe. We just can't find the manpower.
Well, the schedule just needs to be set up different then. The chief's going to be told he's got to work during the day and then
He is working during the day.
Have Brian and, Brian and Doc just work nights. And that could take care of that problem in a hurry.
Well, I think the manager's heard you're letting Lima Charlie.
I walk streets, we, two streets down a day, and every time I walk street, I see a police officer out.
Oh God, I wish I could. I think I'm, I think I'm going to get out on the common then. So I understand we still have more aqua money. Okay, I brought this up several times before, but the, the outside wall down at the municipal garage, okay, it's got a crack on it, by the telephone pole. It's getting bigger and bigger every year. Okay? We contacted.
Run that by me one more time. What is it, where is it at?
You know where the telephone pole is, where the big street light is?
Yeah.
If you look at the telephone pole, it's right there on the right-hand side. Goes right down there from the top right to the bottom. It's gotten about three times as big.
So is it on the ambulance side or the?
Ambulance side, right on the corner there. I did talk to Jeff about it, we did get ahold of Zeitra out of Williamstown. He said, or Washington, wherever he says his offices in Williamstown. He said, one of two things can happen, you can dig that down a little bit to try to see what, why that corner's sinking, why that wall's separating. He said, you're not going to get the same bricks again that you got on there now because those bricks are way too old. That building's over 40 years old. And he said, the other problem is, when you take the corner of that down to fix them, bridge, bricks, the whole wall could fall off because depending on what's holding that brick, those bricks up. But one of these days, we want to come in and that hole, all that wall's going to be laying right on the ground anyways because we're not fixing what's supposed to be. And one of those two walls is going to fall over. Okay, and I've heard you mention paving. Okay, is the Wall Street Bridge one that's going to get paved?
No. Not, not over the bridge, but we're gonna have to fill, uh, fill those holes.
Okay, we can't fill the holes, we tried that twice already. The pavement just keeps getting pounded out of the wall.
The Wall Street Bridge.
You need to take and grind from the bridge back probably 30, 40, 50 feet. I don't know, a contractor could tell you the best way to keep that pavement in there on both sides of that bridge, and then pave nice smooth entrance to it. It's getting worse as the months go on, and it's getting harder and harder. Every time you drive over with the ambulances, it beats the hell out of the back of them along with the patients laying on the boards. And Richardson Avenue, I know we talked about that. There's a possibility of getting a lease. All we need to be done over there is about a quarter of that road paved. It doesn't, the whole road doesn't need to be done.
Or they did patch it.
Okay, one more thing, and I don't know if Gail's here for it or not, but what are we going to do with that kiosk stuck over in the middle of the field over there? My understanding was that we got permission from Norwich to put that in between Mayo and the Armory. When are we going to do that?
So I did have an engineer look at that, and he determined that it's, it's probably too tight to put that in there because it'll be right up against the Mayo building there. But I'm going to take another look at that. Have been talking with the new owners of the business there. They were a little uncomfortable with it being so close. But again, unfortunately, it's awfully tight to fit there because you've got some poles there and, and the buildings right there as well. And, but I'm, I can present the engineered plan to the board.
Okay, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Gail?
Good evening, folks. I'll just take a minute or two to share with you an observation and the thought that I had today. And the reason I wasn't further up on the agenda is because it only happened today. I was driving on the Common and I saw that there was some deconstruction going on on the sidewalk on the area near the Mayo Insurance Company, hole in the ground. And I checked into it and found out that they're putting in a ramp adjacent to the electric vehicle station. And this was in our plans initially. For some reason, it wasn't done in the beginning, so it's happening now. I got thinking about this, and this community is sort of on fire. There are a lot of initiatives going on, there are a lot of great things happening. And a lot of them involve the Du Bois and King Engineering Firm. And one of them is the revitalization of the Common. Another is the accessibility on the sidewalks. And another one is a signage project that the Conservation Commission is doing that also involves foundation, a cement foundation. So I was thinking about all of these items, I'm thinking, wouldn't it be great if we could coordinate these digging items and sort of builds on something Mary was, was saying about the Energy Committee pipes? And if we could build on this and actually coordinate when we're digging up our sidewalks, when we're putting things together, it would be more efficient, it would save us money, it would save time and wear and tear and energy on our community workers. And it just occurred to me that it was a question, so how do we better coordinate these initiatives that are happening? We, we don't necessarily get the big picture, or I sure didn't for a long while. So how do we coordinate all of these things? And there are more coming down the pipe. And so that's really my thought that I wanted to share with you all this evening. It just, I'm hoping that one of the things that the, Lynn's still here, that Du Bois and King has recommended, that you all will hear about in detail in a couple of weeks, but it's been out there at the Common, Night on the Common, and at Liberty Weekend and other times. They are suggesting a bump out on the sidewalk near that same area where this digging is going on today. And, and putting the kiosk there because there will be sidewalk space for it, not beyond the sidewalk and not on Norwich property, it would be on our property. And so they're suggesting that, and I was thinking, wow, maybe they're digging for that, but of course they weren't. So I, I just wanted to suggest that we coordinate these things so they're not happening randomly and that they, they can really use our talents and our abilities and our workers to best advantage. That's kind of my thought for you this evening. And the question is, how do we do that? And maybe that's something you can tackle at a future time. Thank you.
One thing that we've done, Gail, is we've created a tickler file, which is another term for projects in the queue.
Creating what?
A tickler file, or it's a project in the queue. So instead of having everything in Jeff's office, and it's a busy place in his office, the tickler file gives us all a chance to say, hey, we're going to be doing, we're, we're going to be doing the Main Street Bridge project. And can we coordinate that with the dam removal project? Which is what we're going to do. So you're going to have one group of construction folks doing the bridge and while the equipment's down, you could do the dam removal project. We had that in the queue, sadly. The materials for the bridge wasn't available, so we went forth with that. So we do that frequently.
It's great stuff.
Right, so the Riverwalk project is, is another one. You know that we're going to put the dam project, we're going to remove the dam. In the process of that, they're going to have track hoes and dump trucks and coming out, in and out of Dollar General, so they're going to upset,
A lot coming up.
They're, they're going to upset that whole acre of property. Okay, so now you have to leave it in the condition that we want. Here's a chance for us to build a river project. So as you leave, leave it in such a way that we can finish it with, and have a riverwalk. So there's lots of things that happen, sometimes they work out, sometimes they don't.
Just add a couple more to your list.
Right, no, it's, it's, that's the way effective management goes. So we're on it, and we're getting better at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For their public participation. Yes?
Do I have to state my name, probably?
Please.
Erica Hulop. So you guys all know why I'm here, because I sent you an email. So I'm not going to go into that again. I will say that I'm not waiting for Northfield to move forward with the revolving loan fund. If I'd known about this, I would have done that six months ago. I would say that I would recommend in the future that you not advertise something that you can't move forward with because it's been a very frustrating process. And if I had known at the beginning that the process was going to take six months, again, I could have looked forward, but I kept getting told that it was going to be next month, next month, next month. And that's, now it's been six months. So it's been a very frustrating process. I'm looking forward to working with Alex. But I, again, I would, I would just recommend if, if, if you know that you have a project that's on there and maybe it's not going to work out or it's not going to be able to move forward, just don't advertise it because it was just a really frustrating thing to have to deal with it for the last six months. And Tom has been great, really trying to help. But it's just been a really long six months, and I think it could have been done better.
I did not know that you were out there and having these problems. And so I sent you a response today that I could have sent you a long time ago.
Yeah.
And I'm really sorry that, I'm, I'm available once a month, and I put it in Front Porch Forum. I wish that you had come and told me that you were having this problem.
I was, I was trusting in the system and.
I, I was a, I was a probation officer, and that's a social worker with a badge, basically. And so I was aware, made aware, I had to know about this, that, and the other thing that was available. So I wish that you had come to us.
Mary, it did go, it went to the Economic Development Subcommittee because it was through Tom and Jeff. And that's, and then we came to the full board to tell you all that we didn't want to try to give out a loan when we didn't have the committee in place and we also didn't have the structure that felt good to us. So that's why we started talking about the document, and that's why it did take us longer. And I'm sorry about that, about how long.
Yeah, no, we had a program that was available, and it, it, what's the word I'm looking for? It expired.
Non-functional.
It was non-functional, and we never did anything to bring it back. We were, it was months, I think it was greater than, I think it was about nine months, I think it was March we, we met as the committee. But for nine months, we just had our, our heads in the sand.
Well, I think, moving forward, I mean, as frustrating as it was for me, you know, hearing what Alex can do, it sounds like it's going to be even better moving forward. So I'm kind of glad that came out of it, you know? I think it'll be, and, and the way Alex talked tonight, it sounded like it'll be a really positive thing for the town. So I'm glad that that did come out of it. And, and I was enjoying talking with him, and I think it's going to be a good process moving forward. But don't worry about having to rush your part of it because I'm just going to go direct to the source since I don't have to go through the town for that, so.
Well, thank you for hearing this.
I'm glad you were here too.
Glad you found out.
I think the other thing is too, we found that what was currently in place was, the review criteria was, was pretty high, and I think.
And the cost was.
Yeah. And the whole goal is to make it easier and more available.
And I think you obtained that. So what this guy said, I, I think you could, you know, always own.
Yeah, and a thank, huge thanks to Tom because he did all of this research.
America, man.
To figure out.
I'm sorry for your length of frustration.
And we, I hope in the end we have a better solution because some of it taking along is sort of showing the weaknesses of a municipality trying to do something that we don't actually have the experience and and history with. So now we can work with folks who really know what they're doing.
So one thing I do want to go back to board member comments that I should have said, and John sort of mentioned it, was the Night on the Common was a phenomenal success as far as getting to meet more people involved in the community and getting to see all the organizations in the community that are doing work. It was really a good event, so thank you to everyone involved.
You just triggered something that I forgot.
Sure.
Which is about that, we talked last year about getting all the photos printed from Night on the Common and either having them, the community photos displayed in here or in the, the town offices. And I think Carolyn Stevens said that she had copies of them all.
Okay, I'll reach out, okay.
She might be the, a good source to get copies, but.
Well, Bill Cronin.
Yeah, and obviously Bill Cronin had them.
Who was the photographer this year?
Bill Cronin.
And was it Bill up there?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't get in the picture.
I know they don't have everyone in our community, but they're kind of a wonderful, they're a record of coming together.
Sorry to re-ranspoke them. Any more public participation, yes, Eric?
I just thought of something.
There you go.
So you guys are very familiar with Kira Gauthier because I know that she's done a lot with the town, and I just wanted to let you know that she has, she is ill. So didn't know if you, you guys would want to reach out to her. She's doing great, but.
I'm glad, I thought I saw her at the Night on the Common.
I thought I saw her.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, she's doing really good.
Well, that's good, thank you.
And that brought up another part because I was talking with her little boys tonight, and they've gotten into basketball. Do you know if there's a child-sized basketball hoop in any of our little?
You mean height-wise?
Yeah, height-wise.
I would say no.
They're all full-size, even at the elementary school.
Up at the park, there's a lowered one.
Yeah, there's a lowered one. It's not like, I don't know how little it'll, you mean.
But there's, there's less than full.
Yeah.
I don't know because the little boys.
Well, for a while, we had the crank ones. Lynn probably knows this too.
You still have the crank one. They come down, they're probably like
Yeah.
Probably six feet off the ground.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And that's up at the Memorial Park?
At Memorial Park, cool. I think the school probably has one too, but.
No, it actually, Ben checked out the elementary school and they are adult-sized hoops.
Okay.
Brilliant.
And he's got. I know, it's like really, it feels like an exercise in futility when you're a little kid trying to reach the big one.
Yeah.
Well, I don't play basketball, I get frustrated. For the public participation.
I'm just a basket one.
Yes, sir.
That little thing, we've been talking about geothermal piping. You've got to do a minimum of 15 feet below ground with your geothermal piping to have it work. I have a cousin that put in the system and put it in five feet deep, and it's only one-third effective. So you've got to get at least 15 feet in the ground to get the heat. And that's quite a process.
After that, that meeting, after that group meeting, I called up a provider and they go down with the six-inch pipe 300 feet for every ton and a half of heating that you need. I need three tons, so it's two wells, 300 feet deep. So it's, but.
Just a clarification on that, however. Geothermal, a lot of what they're talking about is recapturing some of the heat that's generated from places like the cabinet mill. So you don't have to drill it all. And some of these places, these plants that are generating that kind of heat as a waste product of the products they're making is what they're, where you don't have to go as deep. Just, you know, there's a couple of different conversations.
And just for your information, there aren't grants available for that lane of the pipes. That's not something the town would have to pay if we're on top of it and apply for those grants through the state.
Well, I, I think the town would have to borrow a significant amount to make that happen.
Well, certainly future discussion.
Sure, absolutely.
Because the piping, for the one the tape put in, it's a grid work. They put in about 300 feet of piping. But about 16 feet.
I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah.
We just installed 300 of them.
Yeah.
Moment that we're building. And I received a quote five years ago from my house, and it was mind-boggling. There is a need to go into executive session this evening regarding illegal and contract items. I would say take a five-minute basis.
Motion?
Yes, we need a motion. Motion to go into executive session following a five-minute break.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.